Red light.
What was that?
Red light.
All right. I'd like to announce that we have just come out of non-public.
Chair, I would move that the minutes for the non-public meetings be sealed until such time as a majority of the four deals are advised in frequent times.
I'll second that.
Matt seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, I'd like to move to the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Next item, approval of minutes.
I would move to approve the selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated November 13th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Errors or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, new fire rescue station project update. Fire pump. Who has that item?
I think it's mostly a read from, because the fire chief wasn't able to be here, but, Mike, you probably have some background on it. Do you know about this proposal from Plastow?
Oh, the diesel fire pump?
Yeah. Chief sent us an email.
It's a little early to, let me jump. It's a little early to see if that's going to work or not. It's a very gracious offer. The town of Plastow has extended to us. They have a diesel-fired fire pump. The chief and I went to see the Plastow chief yesterday. I got the spec sheets on it, and I've turned them over to the fire design engineer to see if it's even going to work. So, we won't know anything. That's where it stands. I think I would stay in limbo. Don't get too excited, because, you know, it'll be great if it works, but way too early to tell.
Okay. Thanks. You. At least, we know that there was an offer made, and we're investigating whether or not it will actually serve the purpose for which it's offered.
Yeah, great offer from the town of Plastow.
Yes, and it's greatly appreciated.
But I think, I think you have the board's backing to pursue it, to find out more. You know?
Most definitely.
And for the folks at home, what that would do is that would reduce the amount of money we'd have to invest to meet the, what is it, August whatever deadline, 2019, to come into compliance with the sprinkler system, so.
So, I have a question as a resident. This pump, we have to return it to them.
No.
That's what it says in the email.
When we are done with it, but we can use it.
Within one to two years, we have to return it.
That's not what was said to us yesterday. Where'd the email come from?
Okay, the email, let me get it, bring it up, so that they will, you know.
Chief McCardle sent the email.
He did?
Yeah. Or he signed it.
But now that I want it, I can't find it, right?
Yeah, he does say at the end, it says, "It might have greater value in operating it to a neighboring town to help them over a hump, if only for a year or two, if that", with the caveat, "It will, it is, will be returned to the town when done," whatever "when done" means. I'm throwing it out there for consideration, so obviously, we need more information.
Yeah, that'd have to get clarified. He didn't say that when we met with him yesterday, and I almost, I'm going to read into that as, "If we don't use it, or we're done with it, to return it to them." That would be my take on.
I could see, yeah.
What he's saying there. But that definitely needs to be clarified, because we don't want to go through the time, the effort, and the expense to find out we only get it for two years.
Agreed. And I was looking at it the same way that you were discussing it, but we would definitely want to confirm and have it in writing that should it be a workable solution, that there's no deadline for returning.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Our next item is just project update in general. Anything new?
Really, not much of an update. I think, I lose track of, because I've got so much stuff going on. I think everybody's where the department is in there on a temporary, certificate of occupancy. Everybody's up to speed on that.
Yep.
Now that they've occupied it, it's kind of a shakedown phase. The fire chief has got me doing some modifications and changes and adding plugs and stuff of that nature that isn't uncommon. Yeah, no, some of the other changes that were requested for ADA compliance, most of them are being done, if not done already.
Yeah, and those are scheduled to be completed by the end of this month, right?
End of the month.
And we're on target.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, I'm no, I'm no construction expert, but it's not uncommon to get a, to get an occupancy permit and still have a punch list of items to.
No, punch list is pretty typical on a construction project. I don't know where you want me to stop as far as answering questions, but I know, and you can just yell right at me, because you know I'll go right off the reservation. As of most recent, there's been a shocking, a social media uprising regarding the fire station. Astounds me personally that that platform is used for these type of conversations. But, that being said, has there been any consideration given to literally throw water on this nonsense? As far as the questions that are being asked and the.
The board has tentatively scheduled a meeting for December 1st, so that the public can speak to the board directly, instead of on social media or amongst themselves, to get any questions asked or answered regarding this project. So, it's just intended to be, people have questions, apparently from these Facebook posts, and may not be getting the correct answers. Come see us December 1st, and we'll do our best to satisfy their concerns.
Okay. I mean, my, my main thing is, because I was thinking about this, is people have to understand, these meetings and the minutes and all that stuff are the direct, sort of the unfiltered information about what we do in town. But with that, you have to understand, there are also an executive-level meeting, I guess you would say, that we don't have time in this meeting to go through every single line item about any department, right? I mean, we have Police Department, Fire Department, we talk about things at a high level, but the chiefs are doing business daily that we just, we can't regurgitate the entire business in a meeting like this. Everybody's, every taxpayer's a stockholder in the enterprise, so if they want to know things, absolutely give us a call, and we can, you know, I'm sure any, any of the chiefs would like, would love to sit down with you and go through all their, their daily information as far as budgeting and everything they're working on, but most people don't have time for that. So, the agenda item, you've been here like practically every meeting through this project, giving us an update, and you give it at a high enough level that we can, can get you in here and get on to other agenda items. So, standalone meeting, just to kind of close things out for the public, I think, is a good idea, and we'll, we, like Lisa said, we have it tentatively scheduled, and then maybe we can get that out there. But I would say, don't believe everything you read, and especially.
About half of what you hear.
And about half of what you hear. But in this meeting, if, if people have questions, this is the place to add it and ask them, and when I say "this" meeting, the meeting we're, we're scheduling, is the place to ask them, and if you can't make it, email it. We'll, probably similar questions, the people will be there, but, but you kind of said metaphorically, "water on the fire."
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's probably the way to do it, so, you know.
Well, that'd be good.
Yeah.
So, you have any more questions for the board?
Regarding the fire station?
Yes.
I don't know where I'm going to work, work it in, so I might as well do it here. Clarification on, it's more, we'll do it on the winter. We got winter.
Yep, snow plowing.
I'll do it under that.
We have plowing, okay.
Yeah, it's, more pertains to that. I'll do it under that.
Okay. And I've noticed we have a guest in our audience. I'd like to go off schedule and allow him to come to the podium and tell us why he's here.
Is this under other business, then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hello? Is this thing on?
Yes, it is. All you have to do is tell us your name and your reason for being here.
Hello, my name is Finn Blomberg. You might recognize me. And I, I'm here to get some info for a Boy Scout requirement. I'm part of Troop 93 of Kingston, New Hampshire, but I live right here in Newton.
Okay, and what information can we provide you?
Okay, I just have a few questions. Okay. So, first off, what do you think is the most important environmental issue in the town right now?
Okay, would any of our board members like to take a stab at this?
Stormwater management.
What?
Stormwater management. Do you know what that is?
Like managing the excess water from storms?
I'm having a hard time understanding.
Managing the excess water from storms.
That's the brief way of putting it, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next question.
Do you know what's causing it, or is it just the weather?
There are multiple factors that are included in it. Most of it is weather-based.
So, how long has this been an issue?
How long has it been an issue?
Let's see, we've been doing the MS-4 for 12 years, I think?
Probably 20, at least. So, at least 20 years.
Okay.
And we are, just so you are aware, that we are deferring to Jim, because Jim has been involved in Town of Newton for more years than the rest of us.
And particularly with stormwater. Stormwater management falls under the Board of Selectmen as a final applicant with something called the MS-4. That is a form that has to be filled out for the federal government, describing exactly how we handle stormwater and its maintenance and its treatment in the town, especially as regards to certain specified areas of town, where it is of a concern because of the waterways that stormwater flows into and the condition of those waters. So, I mean, it's a major process. It suggests if you want to learn more about it, on Tuesday, next Tuesday night, there's a planning board meeting, where the planning board presently in town is reviewing rewriting and will be re-adopting new stormwater management regulations. It'll probably put you to sleep, but if you really want to know the crux of it, I would go to that meeting. I will be there, because I'm ex officio of the planning board. And you'll, but you'll be able to ask many more questions that way. I didn't know something like this was coming up, otherwise I'd have brought.
That's okay. He only needs high level anyways.
Jim, do you have a microphone? I want to check to see if it's on. Hearing some audience feedback.
Move it again.
All right, Finn, your next question?
Okay.
And how many more do you have?
Two or three more.
Okay.
I hopefully won't waste too much of your time. Okay, next question. So, is the town doing anything about this, and what can us as a community do about it?
About stormwater management, there's actually a proportion. Once we have completed the, the new regulations for the stormwater management, the MS-4 requires that there be community interaction or community service aspect of the plan that has to be implemented. As far as educating the people, if you're saying, "How could the Boy Scouts help?", when we're to that position, where we're working to produce something for community interaction, the Boy Scouts could be very helpful disseminating information. Boy Scouts are usually very good at rallying cries, so.
Okay. Do you know, do you know about how much this will cost?
Right at the moment, on an annual basis?
We're basically just doing some testing.
Right.
It's not, we don't have, you know, maybe 13,000, 15,000 a year.
Right, plus, we're spending.
Or?
We received the grant for the rewrite of the.
Yeah, that I'm not too familiar with.
Right, that, that was another, I believe it was 5,000 between matching grants. So, I mean, it does start to add up. However, failure to complete the MS-4 in a timely manner and submitting it properly comes with a fine of, I believe it's $33,500 per day.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
So, it has to be submitted by a date specific, which, don't ask me what it is right now. If that's a Monday, and we get it in on Tuesday, we kind of have to include a check for at least $33,000 to go. Every single day that that MS-4 is not filed.
So, that 15,000 to 20,000 per year that we're spending on it currently is a lot cheaper than $33,000 a day for not doing the testing and getting the paperwork in.
Okay.
Okay. Next question?
Okay, this is the last one. Just for some reference, is, are there, any other environmental issues in town that I would like to be aware about?
I know Conservation Commission is doing some testing of Country Pond, because that's a pond that is shared between Kingston and Newton. And we are listening to the Country Pond Something Association, which is a brand-new association that's actually dedicated to preserving the lakes, looking at chemical levels, invasive species, and things like that, that are affecting the pond.
Okay.
So, the Conservation Commission would be a good follow-up board to go to for information on that particular aspect. And does that answer all your questions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming.
No problem.
All right, so, on to the next item. The old fire station, closing the building and turning utilities off. Who is?
So, Kim and I and Diane have been discussing this building, and if the fire department has moved out, there's no point in running the furnace down there if we're not going to, and I guess the furnace isn't in good shape anyway, but if we're not going to run the heat, we definitely need to drain the pipes, so they don't all break. We're thinking with the new, you know, building, and the expenses going there for electric and fuel and propane and that, we want to cut this one off, so we're not paying for both buildings.
So, Larry, with your EMD hat, I recall something about EMD not moving to the new building until something was in place.
Well, the state said I could move over there.
Okay, so.
With the generator.
Are you moved over there now?
Not yet. I just, we just had a meeting Friday.
Okay.
Because what you're talking about, right, is, is one of the reasons we have that, that need to come into compliance with the, the generator and sprinkler over there is because it's an EOC. Is that what you're?
What Jeff was saying is that you can't call it an EOC, because you don't have a generator.
Yeah.
And I went to the state, and they said he's totally wrong, and we'll just leave it like that. So, yeah, I can move over there.
Do you have that in writing? Did you get that in writing?
From the state?
Better.
They just gave us three grants. If you want to call them a liar, feel free.
We don't want to call him a liar, but.
We're not calling them a liar.
We just like documentation.
We're just asking for something in writing, so that we can refer back to it in the future if we have to.
Yeah.
I mean, if you win the lottery and you're gone tomorrow, we're going to say, "Well, Larry, even though he's not here to vouch for it, he said, you know, he doesn't carry a lot of weight as a document."
Well, I think one of the other questions for the old station, I think Mike was inquiring if we should be plowing that out or not, you know, so it's, it's twofold. Yeah, it's on here for Mike to discuss on his end, but we just need to get some direction from the boards.
I'll make a motion that we close the old fire station, and.
Drain pipes and.
Authorize whatever is necessary done to.
Winterize it?
Winterize it.
I, no, I wouldn't say winterize it. Drain it. We're never going to use that building again. I do hope and pray.
Well, draining the pipes would constitute winterizing it, too.
Draining the pipes, calling unitile, having to pull the meter. I mean, if we leave the meter on the building, we're still going to be paying a monthly charge.
I take it all the, oh, sorry, that's a motion, so.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
So, I take it that we still have stuff in there, and do you have any idea how long?
Yeah, at least a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Just make sure everything's out of there.
Because we can probably hire a plumber or somebody to go in and do that winterizing and shutting everything down.
And arrange for it to occur in, say, two weeks? So, that gives you a deadline to get.
I would amend my own motion and have a date when specified by EOC.
Okay.
Like I said a while ago, when I moved out of my parents' house, I still had stuff there for a while, so they had to give me a date, so.
Yeah, my daughter took care of that with my son. She moved his stuff out for him.
This way, as the building gets colder and colder, and the heat does not work, we should also contact, I'm sure there's propane tanks, what have you, that should be picked up and the town reimburses for contents.
We have the generator down there. You said Seabrook's going.
Seabrook's going to take that.
Seabrook's going to take that generator.
Right.
So, they would worry about the fuel, I'm thinking, I don't know. Because I don't know if the company will take it back, where it's already being, I think, I don't know.
That tank's old.
Tank's old, Larry said.
We just need to make sure that there's not a propane tank sitting there that's untended.
No, no, if they take the generator, they'll have to take care of the tank, too.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll definitely won't stay there.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, just on this topic, I would, it would bother me if I didn't mention it, and it's painfully obvious. As soon as you close down a building, kill it, it instantly starts to deteriorate, which goes to the big question is, you guys, you get, sell that as fast as you can.
Yes, we are aware.
I mean, as, once you kill it, 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 it's amazing how fast the building will deteriorate.
We just couldn't make any decisions on that building until we had the fire department out of it.
Yeah, just.
So, once we have them officially out, it'll be an agenda item for us to dispose of.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
As, thank you. As a lot of land.
Yes, exactly. As a lot of land, not, because that building just isn't worth anything. All right. Our next item, memo from bookkeeper.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Next item, memo from bookkeeper, and this, I believe, is to know where to pay some invoices from, which budget line item?
I believe these were, these were items the chief was, the fire chief was going to cover in his budget. Am I correct in remembering that conversation?
That was my understanding as well.
So, can we send a message to the bookkeeper saying to pull these out of the fire budget?
I don't think those were in the fire budget. That's why Kim's asking, because we've got invoices attached, and I don't think it was ever decided where they were going to be paid out of.
Right, I believe.
That's this way, the items that were in the fire budget.
Yeah, I think, I see Mike slowly approaching the microphone. The, I believe.
Really bewildered look on my face.
I believe these were, the fire chief approached us about these, they were kind of just go-dos because of the timeline of getting in there, and he said that he wanted to get them approved, so we could get in there, and if, if they weren't covered under the bond, he would cover them under his budget. He's not here to correct me or not on that conversation, but.
Can we share what, what they are?
Mike, here you go.
Yep.
I believe these are additional bills from what you already voted.
Yeah, can we just say what they are?
So, for the, the millions of viewers at home, it's plumbing labor and materials from, for the laundry, to plug in the, it's 16, $1,630 for that laundry system, and just so everybody knows, this is not your standard laundromat. This is for, for the turnout gear cleaning. There's also a network from Armon Network, installation of Wi-Fi access points in the apparatus bay for $2,655. And then the third item is TCS Communications Corporation, $2,910 for the speaker system upgrade, and just so everybody knows, that's so they can hear the dispatch calls, stuff like that.
So, the first one for the gear extractor, you had voted on that, and she's okay with that one coming out of the fire department budget?
That we voted on, that one.
Right. The other two, we did not vote on those. We didn't, you didn't determine where to take the funds from, because we didn't have a number, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know the chief couldn't make it tonight, but I'd rather have him here for this conversation, because as I recall, these things have been in play for the duration of the project, and what he told me at the beginning of the project was, these were things he needed to get done. He had hoped there'd be room in the bond, but if not, he would cover them in his budget, so that's, that's my understanding.
And I think that sums it up. Alls, alls I'm going to add to all that is that the original base bed.
Did not include them.
Correct.
Right.
Now, is there funds left as a contingency? There are, but you guys are obviously very aware that we have a sprinkler issue that was not planned on from the very conceptual part of this project. So, funds there have to be held, so that that, that can be paid for somehow, some way. So, I guess it depends on where you want to pull the funds from. Pull it out of this, and at a later date, you're going to have to find funding from somewhere else to pay for that upgrade to the outside of the sprinkler system.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think for the sake of expediency, I'd like to move that these are taken out of the fire department budget.
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion?
Just, if his, his budget's getting low, so if it gets over-expended, then the board can maybe transfer money from another budget.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's settled. On to the next item. We have EMPG generator updates.
So, you have a packet in front of you.
Yes.
The original grant for $29,500 for the generator, it got approved originally from the, from the state through their emergency management program, but last week, meeting with Seabrook, they gave us a gift of $21,000 towards the generator. So, we're going to take that $21,000 off the grant, so the grant's only going to be 8.5, and Seabrook paying 21, and that 21 goes back into the grant process if we can use it in the future, within, within the next 11, 12 months, for something else for the fire station. So, it's just, it's an agreement letter saying that we're going to buy you the generator, but you're in charge of the maintenance and the propane, and it just needs to get signed and agreed on tonight.
Well, I.
I'll move to sign the agreement.
And, let's see.
I'll second.
Yeah, all selectmen, there.
Everyone has to sign it.
Yep, okay, good.
Your copy.
All right. Any discussion? I would just like to say for the record that Next Era Energy, Seabrook Station, has our sincere thanks for their generous gift of $21,000 towards the generation, generator Any other discussion comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item. State Representative Deb Hopson requests to hold off. All right, our next item, State Representative Deb Hobson requests to hold office hours, did...
It's, I can cover this for her, I don't know if, if Representative-elect Melvin's here for the same reason, are you? Just backup, okay, so Deborah Hobson, who's been elected to the, is it 35, is that the one? Yeah, so District 35, so she covers Newton, East Kingston, Southampton, and Kensington. So she has this idea, which is not out of the norm, I think others have done it before, she wants to hold kind of regular, I think, monthly office hours, so kind of set up shop while the town hall's open, off in a corner, and kind of post it on our website that she'll be here so constituents can come in and kind of ask questions. And I would assume, Charlie, you'd probably do it at the same time as our Newton representative, so she just wanted to present that to the board and make sure the board was okay with her doing that. Yeah, so she's got, she might need our Wi-Fi password and stuff.
I did speak with somebody from her office, it might be good if they were to meet up here, and it doesn't disrupt our office hours downstairs.
I was thinking the same thing, that since it's regular business hours, this floor isn't really used at that time, other than planning board access going that way, and since it's for the public, the fact that public walks through isn't going to be an issue, and that'll give her plenty of room, she'll be able to connect to the Wi-Fi power, so she'll have everything she needs. I, I have no issue with that. Do we need a motion for this?
I don't think so, just...
I don't either, so Matt, will you take the honors of notifying her if she's not watching? Thank you.
And I, I think between you and her, you'll figure out the day and the schedule, and just let Diane know so Diane can put it on our website, and we're good to go.
And I would just like to say that this offer would be available not just for state reps, but for state senators or any other state municipal official who...
Who's to hold office hours.
Right, who speaks for Newton, wishes to hold office hours can do so, we would make that openly available to any and all.
Yeah, just work it through the selectmen's secretary so we're not stepping...
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, they'd still have to come to us like Deb Hobson did, but I want them to know that it's out there.
Yeah.
All right, our next item, 2019 snowplow policy. Mr. Road Agent. Now, highlight, any changes to last year?
None.
Perfect.
I mean, the only change that might, might have come into effect, and I don't know the numbers on it, would have been...
We're not over $4 on gas, I know that.
No, not the gas, not the gas, it's the calculation I think you guys get from the insurance company? If, if somebody doesn't have their workman's comp or something, I don't have the sheet in front of me. You guys got the snowplow sheet there?
Yeah, I think we just got the new ones, yep.
Yeah, it's a calculation you guys do internally with probably Primex or whoever.
Yep.
That would have been the only change, nothing on my end, rates haven't changed, none of it's changed.
And it, it does state it's based on the compensation code's no removal 2019 rate, so that is built in here.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's care of the, that, now, where are you going? We're discussing plowing of the new fire rescue station and plowing of the old fire rescue station. So you can take them on together or one after the other?
No, let's do the old one, because I think I have the answer from the conversation a minute ago. No more plowing that, right, let it snow in?
Correct, it, it's not being used anymore, there is no sense in wasting town dollars, plowing a building that nobody's going to go to.
Only except as long as you get all your stuff out, right, because you want to be able to get to it, but after that...
Yeah, but even then, even then, we don't need to plow the whole thing.
Well, I mean, if they're just accessing in and out for stuff, they have, they have the truck with the plow on it.
We should probably at least just try to keep the front door open in case we have to get in there.
But you guys, the fire department can do that, they have a plow.
With the pickup truck, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so I'd say our road agent doesn't have to plow the building anymore.
That's all I'm looking for, clarification, that, that I'm out of that equation.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not plowing any driveways or what have you. I would like to see, just only because I, I do know that the police department uses it occasionally to run radar.
Yeah, but they won't, it won't make sense for us to plow a spot for them to run radar.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say...
They'll get another spot.
I don't know if you could make just a single pass to widen the road a little there.
I say the police department can find a new place to run radar, rather than us paying to plow that area just for the police department to sit.
Not, not a problem, since we do not get any of the money from the tickets, speeding tickets.
Exactly.
Okay.
Anybody have any other thoughts or board in agreements?
I'm good, I don't, I don't think we need any sort of a motion.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, I don't, I don't.
I'm just pulling to make sure the board's in agreement, don't, don't plow.
While we're here, do you guys do anything with the old police station anymore?
I haven't, I haven't since it came back on the...
Okay, just want to make sure, yeah.
Yeah, no.
And, and we shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Okay, are now the new fire rescue station.
Yep, it's clarification at 8 Merrimack Road. Prior to the new station being built, we had the snow under government buildings, we were doing the PD and keeping that operational and open. Now that we have the fire department on the same parcel, and they have a pickup truck with a plow, what is your wishes as far as the highway department doing snow operations up there?
As far as that's concerned, that's a safety complex. Personally, I, I feel that the highway department should, I mean, I can't see you going in and just doing the police and Butler, and not doing the fire, that's not efficient. I would prefer to...
Oh, it is efficient for me.
Yeah, I mean...
It's a big place up there now.
Yes, it is.
I, I don't agree with you, I, I tend to agree with Mike, if, since we invested in the truck and the plow for the fire station, we should, for the fire department, we should probably kind of set a line there and see what they're comfortable with taking on, and then after that, you guys do your thing and, you know, it, it's kind of like neighbors, right? People have separate driveways and they plow them individually and...
Yeah, and I don't think that's very difficult to set that boundary or that magical line up there. It's pretty, there's parking spots for both, so I think if we do the independent areas for each operation, it'll work.
All right, I, I, I think we should have the fire chief weigh in on this.
Yeah.
Because if he's having someone in his department doing the plowing, then that does affect his budget, his payroll budget, just as much as it would yours.
Well, I think it would, I think it would come out of government buildings.
Correct.
That would be my assumption, I, I don't think that pay operation, because if I was to do it, if you had me do it, that would come out of government buildings.
Right.
Wouldn't come out of highway. So if the chief has, one of his guys do that, it would only be fair to have that labor cost come out of government buildings.
I think...
If I, if I might suggest, maybe the road agent and the police and fire chiefs can get together, because it may be something that if the road agent made a single pass up the driveway, around the fire station and out, just so that there was access onto the property, and then the fire department cleared the rest, I mean, there are a bunch of different scenarios that are, that are feasible.
Right, because they may want to take on more of the clearing, since they're up there now.
I mean, I'm sorry, say that again.
I said they may want to take on more of the clearing of snow now that they're up there, we don't know. I, I don't know if their pickup with plow could handle some of the heavy snow, but it could most likely handle most of it, you know?
I hate to simplify this, but let's just do what makes sense, like talk to the two chiefs, you know, because I, I remember the fire chief with the old fire station, we took them off our landscaping contract because he thought it was, he already had people on duty that could push a lawnmower, so it saved the, it saved his budget some money, it might be that sort of thing, right, but...
And that's exactly why I didn't think...
Exactly, so we don't, we just don't have the, all the stakeholders here, so I'm, I'm sure you guys can get together, and I'm kind of good with whatever, if the three of them are telling me it makes sense, I'm good with it, so...
See, the other thing is they have duty officers on duty during the day.
That's right, right.
So maybe they can be plowing in the off time.
I'm wondering if that's his intention.
Another perfect example, however, if there's a foot of snow, that, they might not be able to get up the little grade into it, in which case, okay, if every storm the...
Yeah, listen, if it becomes a major storm, I know they can't handle it with that pickup truck.
Right.
We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
If that's what you're directing me, I mean, that only makes sense, if you're telling me if it's a major storm, we'll go up there and move snow efficiently and get it out of the way, but storms like today, the six inch, eight inch storms, I really don't want to be up there playing around, really don't.
Exactly, but this is the type of thing where the, the fire department's pickup truck is perfect for.
Correct, correct.
And they've got somebody there during the day, hopefully they didn't have an awful lot of calls, okay, while we're sitting here putting out plows.
So... But are all, again, are all duty officers experienced to plow, not necessarily? So it's not always going to be the duty officer.
The chiefs need to be involved.
Exactly, we need the fire chief involved.
It wouldn't come from general government, it could come from the fire department budget, because they're there anyway.
Exactly.
Because I don't, I mean, we can take a guess at how much to budget, we don't know. We don't know how much snow we're going to get, and how much they're going to do, and how much Mike's going to have to do.
I'm sure the chief has a plan, we just need to hear it from him.
Yeah, okay, so...
That's why I suggested...
You're our liaison with the fire department, right?
Yes, I will.
So if you can just reach out and...
Add it to my list.
Thank you. All right, so right now, just do what you've been doing, check with the chief just in case he needs you up there, but for right now, I say status quo until we hear something different.
Okay, we just want resolution on this, like, really quick.
Yes.
Because what I was doing up there, I wasn't doing up there, this is the first year with the new station up there.
Good point, yeah.
This, it's not a, I'm not carrying over it from next year.
When the police department...
The status quo would be not doing anything.
There we go, right?
You were going up there before for the police department, though, right?
The PD.
Yes, and, and that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so just do the PD for me.
Yeah, the status quo, what you were doing.
That's fine, yep.
Leave it at that, I mean, if, if we get bombarded, you, you already know, I mean, if you're, if we're bombarded with two feet of snow, you know they can't handle it.
And if I, if I may suggest, rather than my calling the police chief and having the police chief get in touch with the road agent who is standing in front of us, might I suggest that we ask the road agent to get in touch with the police chief and the fire chief and coordinate everything with them.
And then just let us know what you guys come up with.
Yeah, so in other words, we're not saying have your...
Yeah, clarify that for me, Matt.
We're not saying have your people call our people, we're saying, we're saying just call the two chiefs and make sure it's okay with them and we're, we're happy.
Yeah.
The bottom line is, we need the lot plowed. Now, who does it? Your guys, fire guys, police guys, some other guy, you guys can figure it out, work it out.
Believe it or not, that statement within itself don't work. I have very, you think we have a crazy throw a dot at a dot board operation out there, we don't. I have very specific guys on very specific routes based upon snowfalls of one to three inches an hour. When it exceeds that, we are maxed out. I don't have a bench like a football team to go, yep, you, 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 and you, go. No, we are maxed out, so hence the reason why I'm at this podium, I need to know what my obligation is at 8 Merrimack Road.
And that's why it's status quo till...
And that's fine, I'll take care of the PD.
Okay.
But again, we don't want this to linger on, because we've already had...
And that's why we said...
That's why we're authorizing you to...
To deal with the two chiefs?
Exactly.
I'll give you the answer right now. I'll talk to the two chiefs.
All right, thank you. Okay, update on new accepted town roads?
Well, this came, this came up because of Kinsley Drive. There was a concern that the residents there weren't being plowed, and they were wondering how come, and basically, we told them that it wasn't a town road, so Mike would be...
Not town-accepted yet.
Right, town-accepted road, so Mike wanted to know if there are any other roads that the town accepted that he doesn't know about, and I don't think there is, I don't think so.
We have an accepted road, it seems like it's been about two years.
Couple, three.
Which is, which is fine, because my phone blow up, blew up Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From that new road, smart road, duplexes there, but everybody on that development called me, wanted to know why I was plowing that road.
Yeah.
Not a town-accepted road, I can't plow it.
As ex-officio on the planning board, I have sent out, I sent you a copy, I sent the town engineer, we did receive a request that the town accept that Kinsley Road as a town road, and it is in process. I believe Gail sent you an, maybe I'd sent you an email asking for your input.
When was this?
Within the past couple of weeks.
So I can bring you up to speed on this.
I'm sorry.
So Bill, Gail has talked to the owner of the road.
Right.
The developer, and he is, now realizes that he is responsible for plowing that area until he finishes all the paperwork, and so I think at this point, it is, it is straightened out.
Okay.
Okay, Kinsley will be plowed by the owner.
Okay, so Kinsley Road is being plowed by the owner slash developer of that development until...
Until the road is accepted.
Is accepted by the town.
Right, and he has these steps that he has to follow to get the road accepted at this point.
I know, because I sent him that information.
Right, and now he, he's finishing up.
So now, if we get any more calls from Kinsley, we know exactly what to tell them, which is what you've been telling them.
That's what I told them, but make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music, yeah.
All right. Okay.
Don't go too far.
Don't go away, next item, highway budget.
Hopefully, this will be really fast.
Do we...
No, you never...
Do we have one?
Do we have one?
In our book?
Yeah, you guys can look at it, you, you won't need much, it's level funded. You're not changing one item, you're not changing one dollar, you're not changing anything.
It's not in your book, because I don't have it.
Kim can update it, and then we'll give it to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, because it's...
The same as what it was last year.
Same as last year, it's the same as the year before, it's the same as the year before that.
All right.
If you, if you feel the need to change it when you get it, change it, I'm not fighting about it.
Yeah, you're pretty flexible that way.
Yeah, whatever, you can zero it out, I, whatever.
Yeah, you told us that last year, too, we're not going to do that.
I will move to include the highway department budget in the draft town budget.
I would second.
For discussion?
Draft town budget, same motion.
Well, I realize it's level funded and that it is most likely all necessary, I just would like to hold off on accepting until I actually have a chance to look at it. I don't want to accept something unseen, not that I don't trust you, I do, but I, I just have a problem...
Honestly, like I said a little while ago, you don't like something on one of the line items, change it.
I honestly don't have a problem, only because it has remained unchanged in the past. We have dissected it, understood it, and if it's not changing...
I just have a personal policy, I, I don't sign or accept something sight unseen, that's me.
So we can just call for a vote?
So, if no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Right, doesn't pass.
But we'll, we'll have it, if anybody wants to look at it, we'll, we'll have it.
But it will be on the next meeting so that I have the chance to review it, or we all have a chance to review it. I expect to accept it, Mike, I, I just, I have a problem accepting any... accepting any budget. It's not you.
No, listen, that's fine.
Okay. Um, next...
Not to belabor the point, but we're, just to remind everybody, we're, when we make these motions at this point in the year, we're accept, accepting them as draft. So I don't want anybody to think we're accepting budgets.
Exactly.
They're just drafts because what's, what's likely going to happen is once we get a total of everybody's budget, whatever it is a month from now, we're, we're going to go back and we might have to move with things, uh, move things around in order to get to our target and, you know, appreciate the fact that as one of our larger budgets, highway understands that usually that's the one we, we do some work on, so.
Just so you know, it makes it easy for the bookkeeper if you do accept it. She can put it into that draft budget and we can move forward. Holding off for another two weeks, it doesn't make any sense because it's holding up all the work.
We've already taken the vote and it's...
It was a tie, two yes, two no.
Which means it didn't pass.
That's what I'm saying.
So... So we will move on to our next item, which is tree warden.
There's no budget for that right now. Do you have your tree warden or is that level funded?
It's definitely level funded.
So why don't we just skip right over that?
We'll hold off on that one.
Rather than wasting the time with that.
Exactly. We'll hold off on that one. Recreation commission.
So I'm going to present this one for the recreation commission. I think it's in, this was a late add, if I could find mine. There it is, blue tab in the back. This is also, the attempt, or the goal was to level fund this. You'll see that the increases are background checks, $100, which is a nice problem to have because we actually have people interested in joining. So we're anticipating we're going to have to spend some money on background checks. And salary for the new matrix, as we've talked about in previous, some previous budgets in these meetings, we're anticipating having to add on some salary for, to adjust our one employee for the new matrix. So that's where the increases are. Otherwise, it's level funded and everybody on the rec commission, good night, thank you.
Good night.
Everybody on the rec commission understands we might, we might be asked to do a little, what do we say, sharpening of pencils down the road. But this is the proposed for draft at the moment.
Exactly. How little are you paying your secretary at the moment?
How little?
Yeah. Well, if $1,500 is completely because of the matrix, you're talking, somebody who works maybe four hours a month.
So, so I'll just say I don't know where, how the 1,500 was calculated myself. I, I don't know, but...
This is a, considering how little that secretary does, you know, works.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have the numbers to back up the formula.
Yeah, I would just put it into perspective by saying as of 10-9, the payroll was just a little over that amount, 1,584. So for three quarters, it was 1,500. And then that's almost like asking for another three quarters.
Yeah.
So it is a, it's a small amount, but it's a big jump unless there's anticipation of more hours or whatever the case may be.
Well, yeah, that, that's, you know, 1,500 just seems to be...
So we can accept it as a proposal and he can get us the answer?
Yep.
How's that?
The...
Uh, is that a motion there?
Yeah.
Can I just say first that the 10-9, we've got the 11-14 and the salary has been paid out 2,037. So, you know, it's more in scope with, you know...
Okay. So at, at least they caught up with the payroll anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's 2,000 something. It, it's still 2,500 to 4,000, you know, an additional 1,500 on top of 2,500. That's more than...
Yeah, I just wanted to give the update.
A 50% increase, which is a lot for a percentage. But we have a motion on the floor from Larry to accept it as draft and get the response about the salary. And we have a second from Matt. So any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item is transfer station budget. And that would be under waste, I believe? I don't know. I didn't bring my red pen. S-30, maybe?
I think it's under transfer station, towards the back.
Yep, transfer station. We used to seeing as like SWDA or, yeah, see, SWDA. All right. So Pete, what can you tell us about your proposed budget?
My first draft here, what I am upping is, first line, advertising, just $100 more for a couple of signs. Excuse me. I can get some signs free from New Hampshire, the beautiful, but the custom worded signs that I'm looking for, I'm going to have to pay a little bit. And I'm looking for the more cheaper portable versions, you know, no glass or anything expensive like that.
Pete, can I ask a quick question? What's the total of that budget? You're saying the revised one. I'm not sure they got the right one.
Uh, let's see.
The 20...
Advertising, 2018 budget.
No, the bottom line of the whole budget.
The total proposed 2019 budget.
Total proposed 2019 budget, 360,400.
Okay. Okay, that is the one we are looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my first draft. I had gone over it.
All right. Now, just to go with bottom line, we are seeing a increase in the proposed budget of $34,000?
Like I said, that's my first draft. My second draft, I did drop that down by another 15,650.
They didn't get the second draft.
Yeah, I understand. So we have to...
So it's no...
Pick with your first one and they can adjust whatever.
Yeah.
Okay?
So you, the variances, the pluses that, that you had, it seems like one was around salary?
Yep.
And that's because of the new matrix you're anticipating?
The new matrix, um, some of it, I had two employees that were hired June of 2017 and August of 2017. So that doesn't include the full year of their paid salary. So I did that off of one of my employees who was, who had the full 2017 payroll in the 2017 town report.
But we also see that as of, there's, as of October 9th, you've only utilized 60% of your salary.
Mm-hmm.
So you haven't even, which is in alignment with not having those employees for the full year, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So 20,000 does seem excessive for a jump?
And, I mean, I, I did a couple, couple extra numbers and, I mean, I, to be honest, without cutting it short, I can probably drop that down to 110, 105,000. So I wouldn't be cutting, uh, cutting teeth on that one.
But you still...
I was going to say, the, the matrix actually does not affect this because that one, it's the exact same line that was the original matrix. The difference was when we, and the board knew this, when we promoted Pete to acting manager, there was a bump there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, but then the manager's salary was, so what I'm saying is we have, him as manager, we had a manager, but we don't have two managers. So it's not a big bump.
Well, no, the, the...
It's a transfer of people receiving the funds.
Right, right.
But not a increase in the total payroll.
But there's still 40,000 that hasn't been spent.
Exactly.
So to go above that is...
Were we just informed that there are now two people that weren't, if I get you right, there were two people that weren't in last year's budget?
Uh, there was two people who were only in there for four to six months.
But they were budgeted for the year.
For 2018.
For 2018. Because those positions weren't new positions last year. Those were open positions, so they were budgeted for. And that's where I'm going with this. We don't have more employees at the transfer station than we did in 2017.
Yeah. And that was the previous manager. I don't know why he came up with that number. Obviously, he was working at the time, so his salary might have came into effect with that. But I don't see it being that extra 40,000, so.
I, I can see where you, where you thought you were accounting for something. But yeah, Lisa's right. We would have had it all budgeted because it was in March, right, where, where Tom left and we, we hired somebody and all that. So it would have all been budgeted. But so definitely there's some room here, I would think, for us to play around with. But I'm, I'm good strictly from a draft proposal standpoint, I'm okay with this as long as there's like a highlight that that's where we're going to go for first changes.
Couple other, protective clothing. We're going from a budget of 500 where we've expended just under two and raising it to 1,500. So we're tripling this budget line item. Can you tell us why?
Protective clothing, okay. So I have it here as rain jackets. Want to get some good decent rain jackets, boots for every year. And in my last bi-weekly report, I put in something as a proposal my guys came to me with, that I put towards you guys of, instead of every year having $75 go to an all right pair of boots, every other year they get 150. So we can get a decent pair of boots that would, you know, last a little longer, hold up to the elements that we do go into there.
So every other year, you take care of some employees and you keep your budget the same? Well, i-if you went from $50 boots to $100 boots, right, then you could budget so that one year, because it lasts longer than the year, you know, one year you'd buy X number of employees new boots. And then the following year, the remaining employees boots. And then the following year, back to the original set.
Yeah. So what I'm doing is, starting in 2019, everybody, you know, we would go with the good pair of boots. The next year, we wouldn't have any. And that, that's how I'm working it right now. Now, obviously, I can, I can work with that.
For budgeting, I would say do it the other way, half of them.
Some people got new boots this year.
I believe two.
And I believe also the safety committee policy doesn't pay 100%. We pay $75 or whatever the amount is.
The point that I'm getting at, Pete, is if you're going to spend it this year and then not spend it next year, you can't. It'll have to leave the budget. You, you won't have that line item the year after.
I see where you're coming from, yeah.
So if you budget for X number of boots this year and then X number of boots next year. So your purchasing is a revolving set of boots. And not everybody gets this, a new pair of boots at the same time.
Okay, all right.
But then you have a expected, you know, amount to be spending on boots every year. You follow what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
So a, a different amount that would reflect that kind of budget would work in that line item.
Pete, what's that improvement line?
Improvement, um, that's, um, some of the trims on the buildings. I want to repaint them, you know, make it look good.
You didn't spend anything this year, but you increased it by 500 for next year.
Yeah. Um, in the main building, we have that metal rolling door. I want to get rid of that because I can't keep heating that building. It's creating mold in the floor from all the water getting in. So I want to get rid of that, build a wall. One of the other garages, the door frame is broken. So only the deadbolt latches it. You know, just maintenance like that, painting, like I said, trim interiors.
Couldn't get any of that done this year with the 1,000?
I probably could have, but not this time of year. You can't paint in this.
So you might want to just talk to Nancy about encumbering some of that money to at least get the materials? And then once the temperature gets to where you can paint, you'll be able to do that? So that'll help?
And we may also be able to, like we do with the construction office for the safety complex.
Get the prisoners?
We may be able to, we may be able to get prisoners from Rockingham to come in and do the work. Um, improvement, the bottom.
Okay, okay.
Just have to buy them lunch is all we do.
And resident stickers. I, I see that you decreased that line item.
Yeah.
By 500.
Yeah.
Um, I also see there are no expenditures against the current $1,500 budget.
Yeah.
So can you explain what that line item is for?
Again, that, that initial one was on Tom. And I believe last year, starting last October, we issued new stickers to the residents. We're still giving them out today. That's why I, I, I dropped that down a little bit because we're not going to be spending anything on that for at least another year or two.
So when you do spend money on that, what are you spending, what is that line item used for?
Uh, that would be the printing and...
The new stickers. If we run out, I think we have 5,000. If we run out, we have to print another batch.
And that comes out of the transfer station budget, all the resident stickers for the town beach and transfer station?
I was just going to say, shouldn't that come out of...
General government?
No.
Or town clerk, tax collector, I mean...
No.
No.
Nope. It's facility, transfer station facility to use that.
But it's also used to access any town property such as town beach?
They give them out. It's transfer station that does the bulk of it. And it's always been there because it fits in his budget.
But transfer station doesn't give them out, town clerk does?
No, the town clerk gives them out. But the budgeting's always been in this budget because it's for mainly the transfer station.
So something he has no control over but comes out of his budget.
Yeah, that's an interesting one.
And like you said, there are other facilities that they use, like the town beach and so.
So, yeah, I, I can see why you dropped it down.
And any new stickers, if somebody has to replace a sticker, it goes as a credit to his account, too, so.
Interesting. Never, never noticed that.
Well, that's why I ask my questions.
We, we, we never got the credit sheets.
Yeah, right.
All right. And of course, the, there's two other increases that I am curious about. And I think they're, they may be related. The compactor and box rental?
Yeah. Um, when I get, when I do the Mellow bill every month, I see compactor, box rental is $300 a month. And, you know, 12 months in a year, that's $3,600. That's why I brought it up, that extra 600, so it would cover that cost.
Okay. And that actually makes sense since you're at 2,700 now, which means you only have 300 left in the budget. And that's for November and December? So...
October, November, December, probably. Because I would assume that that gets paid at the end of the month?
We, December goes into next year. By the time we get the bill, we're closing.
But still, it, it's the month of October, paid in November, the month of November, paid in December. So that's still two months worth of billing that's, and with $300 in that line item, I, it makes sense. So I, I can understand that increase. And then hauling, 10,000. Now, have you looked into maximizing or being more efficient with our hauling as far as scheduling it to be hauled?
Yes.
Making sure that we're closer to meeting the full capacity of these boxes or whatever you want to call them before we actually have them hauled out? or whatever you wanna call them, before we actually have them hauled out?
And- and we do try. Sometimes, you know, on a Sunday, we got ones full, ones at a thousand. And I have done this, and I don't call that thousand-dollar, a thousand-pound or eleven-hundred-pound can out. And come Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, that fills up, I got some in the other, and it just messes us up. I end up filling up three or four thirty-odd containers, and, you know, it's just costing us more, sending those out that we cannot compact. So I- that's why, um, and as of right now, we are at forty-five thousand nine hundred fifty for the hauling. And we've still got, you know, a little bit to go, and that's why I brought that up, the extra ten thousand to sixty, excuse me. I- obviously, I can drop that a little bit lower, but I'd probably bring it to fifty-five thousand.
So if I might make a suggestion, I think there are enough changes, which isn't a big deal. We do this with department heads all the time, and this is your first go-around. But I think there are enough changes. Maybe we have you go back to the drawing board a little bit, and then come back to us with another proposal, maybe in two weeks? Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, like December fourth, I think it is?
If- if you want, I'd even be willing to sit down with you and maybe walk through a draft with you, if you want.
Yeah, absolutely, I- I'd love to.
I was gonna suggest maybe Ms. Gonya would. She's- numbers are her forte.
True, yeah, maybe both of us. It wouldn't be a quorum.
Never my strong.
Right, it definitely wouldn't be a quorum.
So why don't we offline, we can kinda figure out a time to do that? But you've already got some notes, so you're half- halfway there, anyway, so we can do that.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, on to our next item, safety complex contract for landscaping. This would be Diane.
Yeah. So basically, they updated the contract to add in all the extras for the safety complex?
So now, some of it, they were already due.
Right, yeah. It's just making it complete now. So the, you look at the 2019, 2020, oh, one, you'll notice that the increases is to the spring and fall cleanup. There's more area to clean up. When we had looked at this back in, when we were trying to figure out whether we're gonna mold backfield or not, he had asked, he- he had said, I don't- he didn't know what it would cost us for the cleanups, so we just put in the default of the three hundred. As you can see, it has gone up quite a bit for fall and spring cleanup, because of the amount of area that needs to be done. So the overall-
Yeah, from three hundred to twelve fifty and three hundred to eighteen hundred?
Yeah.
That is definitely-
Well, remember, we tripled in size, because we only took- he was only cleaning up the- a small portion of the safety complex, so we pretty much got more area to clean up.
I'm going to say something, and we earlier this evening discussed fire department with their duty personnel possibly plowing. The fire department has, when they were in their old main street station, they did the- their own mowing. I still contend that there is nothing wrong with having that person mow. It would be a lot cheaper for us to get a lawn mower than, I mean, these numbers are starting to get.
Up there?
Yeah.
The, I think, I could be wrong. Again, no offense, Chief, if you're watching this later, but we had a lot of questions for you tonight. It just happened to be one of those nights that, uh, when we had a lot of questions and he wasn't available. But- but I thought I remember him saying something like, it wouldn't be feasible to do it once they moved to the new fire station because of the amount of property. The only other thing I would throw in, too, is it's not just mowing, right? Because what they're doing is, they're doing all the treatments, and they're doing, I don't know if we even have sprinklers over there, but-
No, we don't.
They're not doing that. So they're doing all the sea- they're doing the seasonal treatments, because what I don't wanna do is, I don't wanna just cut this grass and let it kinda get a lot of weeds and stuff, and then in- in a few years, it just looks awful. So I'm a big proponent of when you have- you have nice new grass, you take care of it, so. That's just my thing. And we're looking at a- at a, how long is the contract reflective of? Two years?
Yes, yeah.
So when we see ten thousand dollars, it's over two years, right?
Well, it's ten thousand a year, ten thousand a year.
Ten thousand a year, sorry, yeah.
However, this is for just one area.
This is, no, this is for the safety complex, that both-
Right, that's exactly.
Which isn't just the new area of the fire department, it's also the police and-
This is just one location. This is one of multiple locations. And lands- this cost of landscaping, um-
Yeah, now, keep in mind, when it was police station, and that's all they were taking care of, it was forty-seven hundred dollars, not including landing zone.
Correct.
And then we had the new fire station, while they were in, they weren't doing full services at that point. We had-
However, it's gone up six thousand dollars.
So we had, no, grand total, i- if you look at the other spreadsheet, okay, the previous spreadsheet, the 2018 Granite Coast update, oh-nine-oh-five, twenty-eighteen. If you look at that spreadsheet, you will see that back when we were first looking at them having to come in and start maintaining it for this year, that we just did, our grand totals that we were looking at was seventy-seven twenty-five for option B-A, ninety-seven fifty for option B, and nine thousand thirty-one for option C. I don't remember which option B.
You went the full boat.
Yes, that's what I thought, because it was based on the twenty-nine services.
And you were gonna do the backfield, keep it cut.
Yes, because we didn't wanna do part of a field.
Right.
We thought the au-naturel look for part of it wasn't going to be aesthetically pleasing.
Correct.
So we went with the ninety-seven fifty. So for 2018, for that safety complex, it was ninety-seven fifty. Now, for the 2019, 2020, we're looking at ten-three. So is there an increase? Yes, but-
Well, that six hundred dollars is- is an increase over what we're having now, which is full, full salakot service to offset service. My contention still is, is that we're mowing a lot of lawn that shouldn't necessarily be mowed at the same rate. And I just, quite honestly, we're- we're now spending over forty thousand dollars a year mowing lawns. I believe the total that we saw last spring was forty-two thousand.
Let's see. So town buildings was twelve-eight, which included police department, Gale Library, town hall, museum, Ames Ferry Road. And that was in 2017. Plus, we had Greenie Park, which, and that's our expensive one at nineteen-four twenty-one.
Right.
And that's because it includes the fields that actually get used. So they require more mowings in the other areas. And that has irrigation, where I don't believe the safety complex does. So thirty-two thousand for town buildings.
Excluding the safety complex.
Right.
So thirty-two thousand plus ten thousand is forty-two thousand.
Correct.
I just-
It is a lot of money, I absolutely agree.
But I mean, landscaping is expensive. The, you know, I'm looking here, it says two hundred and fifty dollars per service for this safety complex. I know, I do my own lawn, but I remember a guy came in once, he was trying to get me to hire him, he said ninety dollars per week to do my lawn. So it- it's an investment in our properties. There is a kind of a little bit of a sticker shock when you add it all up together, but there's a lot of things we could do that.
I'm sorry, forty-two thousand dollars, we could hire somebody for the thirty-five thousand dollars. The town could have its own equipment. And yet, much better, I mean, then we would have somebody dedicated specifically to the town. I mean, at this kind- at these kinds of monies-
Yeah, but then we'd have to have the equipment and-
And they would be a seasonal employee. And those are hard to hold on to, or to get. You know, somebody who's only willing to work spring through fall-
Yeah.
And then take winters off.
Quite honestly, if you've- you've got forty thousand dollars to- to pay for an eight-month person, you're gonna be offering a very good salary and benefits. I mean, I just, I- I will tell you right now, that the school district's gonna be hearing the same thing, because in the proposal for the elimination of the seminary building, from what I understand, I have not seen the document yet, the school district will pick up the maintenance of all of Kingston's athletic fields.
Why?
That's just part, we're giving, the school district would be giving the seminary and chase field to the town of Kingston, but the- the school district would continue to maintain them. And they're looking at figures like this, and I'm like, why should we be paying for this?
Alright, well, since that's school, I won't discuss it.
It's something I've been looking at a lot lately.
But since it's the school, I won't discuss it at this meeting.
Right.
I do have one more thing, though, to add to this. So because it's probably not in that spreadsheet, because I asked him to send us a new contract for the rest of the town, because remember, we added the seventy-five dollars, I think it was seventy-five dollars per month, for- to bushwhack-
Around the museum, yes.
So you're gonna add another, what did I say, three months on that? Probably a hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars, I think, to the town one.
Two twenty-five, or?
Yeah, something like that, I forget what it was. But he's sending me a new contract that'll have that update. So it'll be, it will be a little more again, but you're gonna have somebody that's gonna be bushwhacking, too, so.
So it'll be like ten-six?
Yeah, I think so.
Roughly. Alright, and, you know, Jim, I am more than willing to consider the option of making it a town employee job, instead of a contracted job. However, I would like to see some research to show that it would be, rather than just saying, it'll be cheaper if we do it. But we would need the appropriate lawn equipment, we would need the rakes, we would need-
Maintenance on all this equipment.
After being kicked in the teeth tonight over the Matrix, be my guest, I just, I am not voting for this. This is forty-two thousand dollars that we're expecting people to shell out to make things look pretty, when quite honestly, we looked at somebody tonight and went, are you sure you really can't trim a little lot more out of your budget? I mean, this is forty-two thousand dollars. There are people in town who don't make forty-two thousand dollars. It's just, this seems to be get, this is some, one of those things that I've watched since I got on this board creep up, as it progressively does, and it has now reached the point where we're paying somebody else, and yes, it's nice to support small businesses. But this is getting past what I can tolerate.
And we have had, um, we have gone out for, you know, for invoices to look for. So I- I'm, it's not this company that, you know, it's high, it's the service.
However, when this last came up, I discussed it, absolutely nothing happened. I'm just, I'm not supporting this any longer.
This goes back to my conversation earlier, that you used this guy for the eight months for this, and the other four months for doing the snow shoveling. Still under the forty-two thousand dollars.
Well, we just signed a two-year contract with this company.
Well, if we signed it, then we don't have a choice.
No, so my thought was, I know this is additional for the safety complex, but at this stage of the game, this isn't the time to be breaking the contract and trying to find somebody to do it. Maybe we should work on it as we get closer to the end of this contract.
One other thing to note, too, is that you're gonna be reducing it by fifteen hundred dollars, because you're gonna be losing the thirty-five South Main Street. So you're gonna reduce it fifteen hundred dollars, the town wants, don't forget that. Because you're not gonna mow it, right?
No. What, the old fire station? Well, of course not. We're not plowing it, why would we mow it?
So you're gonna reduce that by about fifteen hundred dollars as well. So the price will come down fifteen hundred.
In that case, can I ask that we get everything done and then bring it in? This piecemealing of, this one's going up by this much, while the other one's gonna go down, but it may go-
Well, the, okay, the landscaping one for the safety complex is set. Like I said, I am getting an update to the other one, for the other town properties.
Now, this is a two-year contract, and that's a two-year contract. Are they both ending in the same year?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I don't see why this wasn't an addendum to the main contract.
You had two separate contracts. You had one for the other town properties, and then you had the safety complex, which we couldn't do, because we didn't know what it was gonna cost.
That- that I realize, but now that it's done-
Right, and that's what you have here, the safety complex one.
Right. And I ju- this is my own view. This, I- I believe this contract has gone up too high. The other one may offset it, but I haven't seen that yet. So it's-
Right, and what I said is, I did ask him to give us one, so I'm just letting you know.
So what do you need from us?
I just, if you want to, if you want to continue the contract with him for the safety complex, he needs his signature.
So basically, if, to line up with the contract we already have, we'd sign a contract just to get us through one more year.
Two more years, nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen and twenty, so we're already under contract for nineteen and twenty for the rest of the town.
Yeah.
So to Nancy's point, if we wanna, if the board is entertaining, researching, hiring an employee to do this stuff, then we might not wanna make that decision tonight, but, well, target it for down the road.
You can only hire that person for twenty thousand now, because you already spent twenty, you already signed the original contract.
My concern is, we're at the end of the budget, we gotta get this budget put together. We only have December to do that.
I was saying, Jim, we already paid him twenty grand for these two years. So this is just another twenty, but we're not gonna get nobody for twenty grand for the year.
And you gotta buy equipment, and you gotta hire somebody, and you got, you know, we got a month to finish this budget.
I mean, I would just say, we would have to reevaluate our employees, pass it this time, and hire our own guy next time.
Well, we can talk about it.
Well, look into the feasibility of hiring next time. And, again, I'm willing to look at if hiring internal is more cost-efficient, then I would jump on it, but I need to see that that's the case. That- that's all I'm saying. For right now, we already have a contract with this company for two years, so half of, I mean, our budget is already there. We've already had this company do this work for us this year, half of this year, at least, correct, the safety?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? So all we're doing is outlining it, and it's a minimal increase from what we had previously approved already.
Correct.
So, so I'm prepared to make a motion. We understand Jim's not gonna be in favor of it, but I'm prepared to make a motion. I just wanna know the specific, exact number.
So you want to sign the nineteen, the 2019, 2020, uh, safety complex landscaping contract?
Right, but you said the number's going to-
Well, no, not that number. That number- Well, no, not that number. That number will stay the same.
That stays the same, but we'll be getting the fifteen hundred off of the old station. And we didn't know that until you voted.
It's going to be going down.
Yeah, on the other contract. But this contract is ten-thousand-three-hundred.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to move to sign the, what is it, nineteen and twenty?
Yeah.
Landscape contract for ten-thousand-two-hundred?
Ten-thousand-three-hundred.
Ten-thousand-three-hundred per year.
For the safety complex.
For the safety complex.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. Our next item is Comcast franchise fee memo to bookkeeper.
That's a typical letter. We got the franchise fee in. It's just authorizing the bookkeeper to transfer the funds from the town.
We just need a motion for that?
Correct. Or sign the letter. You don't have to motion if you sign the letter.
Move to sign the, what are for the, I believe that's for the division of the.
Okay, to sign the letter authorizing.
The distribution of the Comcast franchise fee.
And I'll second.
Into the cable revolving fund.
I'll still second.
The cable revolving fund and the general fund.
All right. All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Larry, did you say aye?
Aye, yep.
Okay. All in favor? Next item is, let's see, bulk item voucher policy.
Uh-oh.
Now, this has been out there for a couple of weeks. So everyone has had opportunity to review. We did already run it by the transfer station manager, and he was accepting of it as written. So the policy committee worked hard on incorporating everything that we had heard from tax collector and transfer station and town administrator, so that it could be something that could be followed every year. And it falls in line with the warrant article that was approved. In fact, we got the originator of that warrant article to approve of the policy as well to say that it did meet with his intent.
So I know that, and I'm just bringing it up because he's not here, Selectman Donovan had an issue. Where did, where did we end up with that? He had some feedback. I think what he was saying was that if you owned three properties in town, he was saying you should get three vouchers.
I disagree.
Yeah, I'm not saying I agree with it, but what's the thought process behind it?
The thought process was the warrant article stated, issue to each taxpaying household. So the household that is not the owner, so if you owned three properties, you are a taxpaying household in one, but you can't have a household, you personally can't have three households in town. You have one. So you get one voucher.
I can just hear, and I'm being devil's advocate here, because I think I kind of agree with Bob in the sense that I guarantee if I went out around town, I'd be talking to a few people that pay multiple tax bills on multiple properties who would basically, who would say, you're getting me three times. I'm paying you three tax bills, but I'm only getting one voucher.
However, only one is your household. The other are rental units, in which case they are commercial property.
They, they could be rental units. You don't know that they're using them for that purpose.
Well, they can't be living in all three properties, can they?
They could.
I don't think so.
They could. I'm just, I'm, you got to understand where I'm coming from. I don't care either way. We vote either way. I don't care. It doesn't affect my life. But this is what I'm going to hear from people because people see it with their checkbook. They're paying us three times for three properties. They have three tax bills and we're telling them they can only have one of these vouchers.
And that means it should be one per household.
Can I speak on this? My, my thought is we do, we can handle those the same way we do the rental properties today. So the owner can only get one because their mailing address, where they physically live, is where the voucher goes. The people he's renting to, we don't know who those people are. But the owner of those three properties could come in and say, I'd like a voucher, put it in writing. I'd like a voucher for this property at five North Main Street. And they can get one. Because Pete will have some blank ones down there. And as the people go down with the, a letter and the approval from me or Diane, whatever, they can get the voucher. But you can't mail three to the same household who owns other properties because he may just, they may just use it for themselves and not even share it, you know? And it says one per household.
But one could argue it's within their right to do that.
Quite honestly, if you live in the apartments, you do not get one.
Right.
If you live above the, you know, Rose County Market, you don't get one.
Right. It's the property owner.
Therefore, no, nobody who rents property should be able to get one. They are not taxpaying households. Taxes are paid on their building, but that doesn't entitle the property owner to multiples. So each taxpaying household shall be entitled to one.
Just like every business pays taxes, but they don't get a voucher. So they're paying into it. They could have three commercial properties in town and they don't get a single voucher because they're not a taxpaying household.
They can't even take their trash to the dump.
But they pay the same taxes as every other property owner.
Yeah, well, let's not go there because I'm sure they would spend all day telling us why they should.
Well, I was just going to say, and don't forget that, you know, there's no business in town that puts children in our school system. All the things that we look at and go, okay, why are our taxes so high? You know, the people that are doing the least are getting the worst, you know, possible of this. So why should I? Because I happen to own the house across the street from me and rent it out, get two? That's a commercial enterprise. We specifically say the, I mean, somebody could even argue that if you're a renter in town, you shouldn't be able to get a transfer station permit. Because you're living in commercial property. I'm not going that far, but yeah, this.
And as I said, the warrant article stated to issue to each taxpaying household. And we've defined.
Yeah, after the warrant article, you defined it.
Correct. And I picked.
That is the standard.
And that is a.
Yeah. But, you know, and again, I'm spending more time on this than I want to because, again, it doesn't affect my life, but there are people out there who would think household meant each property. But again, we don't have to keep talking. We'll just call for a vote.
Anyone can make a motion anytime they want?
I'm not making a motion.
Move for not.
I will second the motion.
Can you put a little meat in it so Diane knows what we're voting on?
Don't worry, I'll figure it out.
It is a motion to adopt the new annual bulk items voucher guidelines as written. Jim motioned, I seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just be a nay. Again, it doesn't affect my life, but I just want to be one, I know I'm going to hear from people and I just want to be able to tell them I was a nay, so.
All right. And Larry, you were a yea?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries. And let's see, we are now on our meeting schedule for next year. I would like to postpone this to our next meeting so that we have all five selectmen possibly. And since we can still decide what our 2019 schedule is.
So if I may, what is it beyond the first and third?
Are there any special days that we need to be wary of?
Well, your first meeting, right? Because New Year's Day is January 1st and it's a Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm not coming.
Yeah, I won't be here.
Right. So I had, was thinking you could meet January 2nd, that Wednesday. Because if you don't do it then, you're going to have to do it the following week. And then you're going to have another meeting right after that for the public hearings.
Is that the only like special date that you can think of? I mean, within, within reach. I mean, I realize.
You've got things like July 2nd.
Which we can cross the bridge when we.
I mean, they're basically the same days. That was the only one I had, that was worried about was January 2nd.
Because I'd, I'd like to approve the, the schedule as proposed because I think, I think most of us know we're going to be here the first and third Tuesday and then Diane's idea makes sense to just move it to the next day. Well, you don't get any Tuesdays.
Exactly.
Well, occasionally you do, right? If there's a fifth one.
We get five Tuesdays, yeah.
But the, I mean, most of us understand what we're looking at, so, and I don't have a problem with doing January 2nd on a Wednesday. That makes sense so we don't get too behind. So I'll clean that up. I.
So you're not tabling this?
No, I, I don't want to table it. I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2019 Selectmen's meeting schedule as proposed.
Second.
All right. Looking at the schedule, it's one day. I don't hear four out of five saying that that date is a problem, so I'm good with it. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's our schedule. Next item, water quality monitoring quote from Gillespie and Associates.
I think you missed something. Are you looking at the one on, you should have a 2019 town meeting timeline?
I don't have that as a line item on my agenda.
It's funny, I saw it when you sent us an email. I saw it on there, but it's not here.
I think that was added, so, yeah.
Okay. So Nancy can explain that one better.
The timeline, you guys know this is when your town meeting will be, your public hearing, all that. Before I send it out to the department heads, I just want to make sure that you're all okay with the public hearing date, which is January 14th. It's a Monday.
Yep, I have no problem with that date.
And then the 15th would be your last day to hold. So if it snows on Monday, we can hold it on Tuesday.
Yeah, that works for me too.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the rest are all within the same as this year, only one day different, so.
Move to adopt the timeline.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's done. Okay, water quality monitoring quote Gillespie and Associates.
That's the proposal for next year for 2019, for the testing of the monitoring wells and, you know.
And again, the stormwater and MS4 and all that?
No, that has nothing to do with that.
Okay, so this is for monitoring wells on town property and for those near the transfer station?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yep. And they'll do that testing in April. They only do it once a year.
And is there a change in the cost of this or?
It's probably up a little bit. That's probably because, well, it spells it out, all the testing equipment and stuff.
And I, I just want to make note that this is required testing. This is not something the town has an option.
Part of our water management plan down there that we have to test.
Yep. So I would entertain a motion. I'm looking for the actual.
There is a document that you need to sign.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for and that's where I want to be.
The chair signs or?
I think it's just the chair.
Move the chair sign, the Gillespie document contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I got it. Okay. Yeah, one signature. Okay. All right. And then we are, that's any other business?
There is.
We have the other items, right?
Move that we sign the vendor manifest dated 11/20/2018 and the amount of eighty-one thousand. Who's note is on here?
Mine. I didn't know if you, if you.
Um, yes, we need to, there is a check on the vendor manifest for waste management recertification that we need to remove because we no longer need to pay it.
So my motion includes the number eighty-one thousand, four hundred, sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Is that with or without the seventy-five?
That is without the seventy-five dollar check because we no longer need to pay for that.
So when you do the manifest, you just need to cross out that amount and initial. Okay.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I want to move to sign an appointment for Patricia McCarthy to the stewardship committee to a three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have a letter from residents.
Yeah, she couldn't be here tonight. She left it up to you to decide whether or not you wanted to address it or not, or schedule it for the next meeting.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there was a number of things to address. It wasn't like one.
Correct. There were a couple of items here.
We dealt with one already.
Right. So I, I think we should postpone to the five, tonight we have five.
Okay. And that'll give her another opportunity to join us if she chooses to do so.
Yeah.
So postpone to December 4th.
Yes, please.
And the last item that you have, the firefighters.
Oh, Firefighters Association. I saw that. We have a request from the Firefighters Association. They would like to know if they could make use of one of the bays in the Butler Building to store the Santa sleigh, the Christmas decorations and that sort of material.
So.
Move to authorize the fire department to utilize.
They need about a fifteen-by-fifteen spa.
So I, I thought Santa kept his sleigh at the North Pole. So I, exactly. We shouldn't be doing this on TV. But I second what Jim.
That's okay.
All right. So the, the only thing that I would like to say is we can't really state which bay until we know which one is not occupied.
They're all numbered, so somebody should be able to tell us.
To determine which.
Availability, right, which bay.
Whichever, whichever bay is available.
I thought they were storing it there right along, but.
Huh?
Yeah, so maybe where it's been.
It's official. It's authorized storage. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Along those lines, announcements, December 8th at 1:00 PM is a Jingle Run 5K sponsored by the Rec Commission. That's an opportunity to, to run and we're going to raise money for Toys for Tots and also the Santa Claus Fund for Foster Children. And also you can bring an unwrapped toy for the Toys for Tots. So we hope people will come out on December 8th at the safety complex for that one. And then the next Saturday, December 15th, the time's escaping me, but that is, the Santa Claus is going to come back to the safety complex to do Toys for Tots and the Marines will be there and stuff. So I think they're there 12 to 2 or something like that, but don't quote me.
Eleven to 2.
Eleven to 2. It's all on the website. So December 8th, December 15th, mark your calendars, be sure and get involved because a couple of good causes there.
Is that when they were looking for people to donate some refreshments and stuff to?
For December 8th. I know, I know. I don't, where did you hear that?
I saw it on Facebook. I think the fire department.
Must have been the fifteenth. Must have been the 15th.
Toys for Tots.
Yeah.